Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 23, 2020 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you all will stand with us, please. Commissioner Lee Bogel will lead us in our prayer and our prayers. Lee?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you at this time thanking you for the many, many blessings that you provide to us. We thank you for the rain that'll help the crops grow and the spring. I guess we've transitioned into summer now, but it's good weather, good time, and we ask that you watch over all of us as we go through our daily lives. And we ask that you watch over this meeting, that we make decisions here today that are pleasing to you and beneficial to all the members of Rutherford County. Heavenly Father, we ask you to watch over our government and other countries as we try to work together to resolve issues of the world. And we ask that you continue to watch over our great state, our city, and our county as we try to move forward in these times. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much that you love us and take care of us each and every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe see. Call a roll, please, gal.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion. Craig Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogel. Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Mike Kush. Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen. Jeff Phillips.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone being here this morning. We're a little bit shorthanded, but we have a quorum and we can conduct business, so we'll get right into it. Under new business, item 6A, we have two items that have been submitted for preliminary plan approval. 6A1, the item number is 22-1006, Erwin Landing, 139 lots on 57-plus acres on PUD located along Lebanon Pike. Charter Commercial is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well this morning. This property was rezoned to planned development PUD back at the Board of Commissioners September 16, 2021 meeting. This preliminary plan is mostly consistent with that approved zoning. The really only changes are the westernmost access drive, Onion Place, which heads to the west for some city development, was relocated just to line up with that properly. There are two additional access points to the north, which are shown on the plan. As you are aware, we've looked at development at plans for the two properties to the north. One's going through the process right now for rezoning of Vincent Property; the other one's been rezoned for several months. The location of those roads, of course, will also coordinate with those adjacent developments. The general layout of the turn lane improvements, you'll recall there was a lot of discussion on that item at the planning commission's meeting, well, meetings, I suppose. We looked at this several times. They are showing the turn lane improvements, however, that'll have to be fleshed out on the construction drawings as far as making sure that the regulations for the county and the state and everything are adhered to, site triangles and whatnot. Just a couple of things on this plan. Next to Lot 108 along the frontage there on the south side, there is a driveway that accesses the property right to the south, the Maxine Henderson property. And it's kind of a, Mike's gonna pull it up on the map here. You can see the drive, it actually, she has two access points to it. She can actually hit Lebanon Pike right there where Mike is showing, and then also in the other direction. The applicant's design team has spoken with Ms. Henderson about that drive that's actually on their property. They were originally showing that on there as a, basically preserving that access road. However, they have been speaking with her, and she says she never uses that side. She uses the other side coming out a little further up, or I guess further down, Lebanon Pike. So she is okay with them taking that particular part of the drive out. I'm okay with moving this forward right now with that. They did submit a drawing that Ms. Henderson had signed. However, there's probably deed restrictions and things in there that need to be taken care of, and also we want something notarized from her of saying that that is the case, that she's okay with removing that part of the drive. Again, I'm okay with moving this forward without that, but before construction starts, final plats, all this other thing starts going on, that just needs to be rectified. But I don't, by all indications, that seems to have been resolved. Also, and we'll talk more about cul-de-sac widths and things a little later on in the agenda, but the width of the cul-de-sac was widened a little bit to comply with the fire code requirements, but the right-of-way width was not, so we can work with them on that. With that, I think the plat beyond, or the plan beyond that's in pretty good condition. I'll let Mike handle any other issues that he may want to bring up.
Thank you, Douglas. What he was talking about was this little cul-de-sac here. We have found out that the fire code says that the minimum diameter of cul-de-sac should be 96 feet in width to allow for the full turning movement of fire trucks. Currently, right now, it's 86 feet in our regulations, and we've asked them to increase this cul-de-sac to meet the fire code. But if you kind of see, it's right at, the back of the curb is right at the back of the, the right-of-way. So there's no room for crews to work or anything like that if, should they need to go in there or work on the curbing or asphalt or anything in that area. So I'd like the ability to work with their staff to maybe configure a better way to put this in here and give us a little right-of-way buffer on the outside of it for maintenance of the curb and gutter and whatnot, and if it's ever needed in the future. There's ways to do that. We could slide the cul-de-sac to the south a little bit and possibly, you can see how Lot 128 is a pretty large lot. Typically, when you set property corner pins, they're radial from the center of the cul-de-sac like a starburst. So if you have this pin here, we could come up here and break this property line and have it come over at a different angle right there and still meet the intent that we're looking for and give this Lot 129 a little bit bigger building envelope. So that's one thing that we'd like to work with. Even though it is still, a little bit farther. Sorry, this computer's acting a little slow. All right. So they have done a preliminary grading plan to show, for our grading and drainage plan, which all in all is in good order. Looks like most of the lots are pad graded for slab homes. But I did notice one area that we'll need to pay special attention to on the construction plans. Lot, I don't know if you can see it, and this thing is taking forever to react to my commands. So Lot 159 is kind of got a slope to it. That'll be extremely difficult building a slab home, so that one might have to be a crawl space home. If their intent was to do all slab homes, that, you know, that one probably won't work. Typically, you don't want any grading on the CUD lots, and we've, they have removed the grading off of the CUD lots and the drainage. So all in all, it looks pretty good. Doug did mention that at the front of the site, if you recall, this was the subdivision that was in between the Rock and the Hard Place. The river goes really close to Lebanon Pike right here, and there's a cemetery on the other side, and there's a slight bend. It doesn't look very dramatic, but if you've ever traveled this section of road, it's a prominent hill here. So what will, and they have done some preliminary grading, and I feel confident that they can make it work. They will probably have to have retaining walls to help with the site distance up here. So I feel confident that they can do it. It's just gonna be expensive with this, the proposed turn lanes. This is the cemetery. It's up in this high point right here. It's the old Black Cemetery. There's graves in there, goes back to the early 1800s. So we want to make sure that those are protected, so, and that the people coming out using this entrance will have adequate site distance. So before any lots are allowed to be built on, we will verify that this site triangle is adequate, that people coming around this south on Lebanon Pike will have adequate time to see people coming out, and people coming out will have adequate time to see traffic in either direction. So, like I said, they've done a preliminary grading plan, and I feel confident that they can make it work. It's just a challenge that I spoke of when they first had it requested rezoning between the Rock and the Hard Place. But other than that, I believe the preliminary is in good order. They've, they've addressed all of our comments, I believe. Will need some fine tuning with, during the construction plan phase, but that does not matter at this instance. Other than that, I think they are in pretty good shape for preliminary approval.
Thank you, Mike. Questions? Lee?
Yes, sir. The, this overall layout, we're of course comfortable with and approve, but this being a single-point ingress egress, this may not be the appropriate time to ask about it, but have we ever restricted phasing because due to emergency services, fire, and other things if those, I know they're proposing three other access points, but that far western portion has a significant amount of lots, and I was just curious if that was a concern for, you know, I know that the others develop around it and may not build at the same time, and they have proposed stubs, but that single-point entry, I know that's been a point of contention in the past as far as reaching those emergency services if something gets blocked or something like that. And just curious if that was something we need to consider here moving forward.
I, I don't think we ever have done that. The closest thing I can think about is, we looked at the development one time that we limited to 60 lots until road improvements were made. I think that was over off of Rucker Lane. That's been quite a while. I mean, personally, I mean, I share the concerns, but I think with the developments to the north, I mean, by the time you start getting any kind of, they get to that part way in the back, I think you're gonna see other development there, so there'll be other ways in and out. I mean, I can't guarantee that, obviously, but that, from all indications, that's kind of what the schedules appear to be at this point.
And that's something I think has just come up in the past and just not wanting to make it an issue or anything, but I know as they build into that second phase, that gets to be 139 lots total, that, I just want to make sure we, typically, we have a secondary access of some sort. I know that came up on Buchanan Estates and some of those to be able to access, that, just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's a good comment.
Good point. The phase line is right past this roundabout here, so we're, you know, we're feeling confident that with this first phase, we can gauge, you know, the rest of the area's development. We asked them to look at, these two developments include this development in their traffic study. If you recall, that there is a traffic signal coming here, and this development is on track, probably a short distance behind this one. So we're feeling confident that they will have this connection out to Central Valley and this traffic signal in place to have another way out for this development.
Okay. I know you all look at that sort of thing. Just wanted to make sure that we, as they finished that first phase, I was kind of curious about beginning the second without that possibility, so, thank you.
Other questions? Discussion? Doug, any comments on slab homes? We historically don't do a lot of those that I can remember. Any particular comments on those?
You might ask the building codes director. I think they're a lot more prevalent than they used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as, I mean, we don't typically, in pattern books, we don't typically ask them to tell us if they're gonna be crawl space or slabs. I mean, it's really up to how they want to do it.
But Ms. Bell, could you chime in to the percentage of slab versus crawl space homes now?
I will say that, I don't know the exact percentage, but I will say that they're well over half. We do more slab inspections or more slab homes today than we do crawl space.
Wow. And I used to be a crawl space fan, but a slab, you can elevate it, you don't get, you know, you can direct the water away from, you don't have to worry about water getting underneath your crawl space. So, I mean, it has its advantages too, but...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mike, what about the parking? You know, since there is only one way in and out, you want to make sure there's no parking on the road. Is there sufficient parking at the homes?
That was discussed, I know at length at the, during the rezoning phase, as far as making sure that they had adequate parking for enough vehicles, I think we've got that addressed. You'll recall when they first looked at this, there were, they were looking at a couple different product types, multifamily, whatnot, and there were some concerns about, you know, having one or two spots in the driveway. They went to a whole different concept, so I think they're in a better place than they were.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve?
A motion.
And a second. Subject to all staff comments. Any other questions? All who's in favor of approving Erwin Landing, item number 22-1006, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6A2, preliminary plan for Merwood, Section 3, Phase 2, Sections 6 through 8. The item number is 22-1007. 150 lots on 50.9 acres zoned RM. Previously approved planned residential development located along Merwood Boulevard. 360 Development LLC is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This development was originally approved back in 2006, as you stated, as a planned residential development under our previous zoning regulations and our subdivision regulations as well. When we updated both those documents, this development became legally nonconforming as it was already approved as a conditional use permit, so we allowed it to continue just based on the approved pattern book. We have seen various sections of this development. Most recently, we saw a preliminary plan for Section 7 back in 2017. The current owners, developers, have changed design engineers, and they're asking for a preliminary plan approval for the remaining lots of this development. They are showing, as you can see, there's an access point right now to Rucker Lane. There will be a second access point to Rucker Lane as well. There's also connection to the north as well as to the south. There was an access that was gonna kind of veer off to the southeast. After discussions with the applicant, we felt it was appropriate to take that out, especially considering that there's gonna be access to the south. There's a possible improvement with the city of Murfreesboro coming through, which we felt that the existing access to the south was a better tie-in than the one to the southeast, so we were okay with that particular change. Most of the comments that we have on this plan have been addressed. I'm gonna turn it over to Mike just to discuss some of the drainage issues. The northern sections, Section 7 and 8 on the northern part of the development, there may have to be a little bit of fine tuning as far as the drainage going through those areas, but Mike, I'll turn it over to you to discuss more of that in detail.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. When this was originally approved and developed back in, I think, 2006, 2008 range, there was a flatted drainage easement on both sides of the line, a 15-foot drainage easement. I don't believe a ditch was ever installed or any other drainage improvements, but what I wanted to say is, when I was preparing for the meeting, I noticed that there are several, like this fence is over the line, these are right on the line, there's several lots that have stuff built up to the line, in the line. There's a pool with, you know, slab right here. I think there's another pool that's, so it's gonna be near impossible to get a ditch straddling that line, so what they'll probably need to do is adjust and do a 20-foot easement all on the new side on Sections 7 and 8. Let's see if I can show you that. So, right now, they're still showing a 15-foot easement on the new side, so if they want to, you know, I don't, our minimum easement, operable easement is 20-foot wide, so that's why I'm saying it probably would be easier just to put a 20-foot easement on this side to work for the drainage here. Other than that, I think it would be an uphill battle trying to get people to take out swimming pools and all that other stuff. Now, if there's an encroachment over the line, like you saw that one fence that was 12, 14 feet into their property, they do have cause to tell them to get that out and the playground equipment, but, back to the master plan. Like Doug said, we will be getting another much-needed connection to Rucker here. We will be getting another connection here. This is, I think this is Evergreen Farms. That's in the city of Murfreesboro. This is Southern Air. It's a county subdivision here, and we'll be getting two more connections there and there. And I know this is not a site plan issue, but, find, there are some adjustments that might need to be made on the county side. You can see, this is the edge of the existing road here, so it'll need to be reworked a little bit to line up in the right-of-way. I guess it kind of, you know, back in the day, it was kind of easier just to build the road as needed, but you're making sure that we put it in the right spot these days. Like, here's another one here. You can see the road kind of meandered over here, so they'll have to do some adjusting into the county portion. I think the Evergreen Farm connection, I think that one was okay. But, like I said, that's mainly a construction plan issue. I think it's okay. They are, oh, the right-of-way. The right-of-way was originally approved as 40-foot width in the planned residential development, but to meet ADA requirements, we asked that they install five-foot sidewalks. ADA requires five-foot wide sidewalks. If you have four-foot wide sidewalks, you're supposed to have a passing point every 200 feet in the sidewalk, which is near impossible to do, so it was easier just to make a 42-foot wide width. Typically, if this were a brand-new subdivision, we would require 50-foot sidewalk, right-of-way, excuse me, 50-foot right-of-way, hands down, but we, since it was in the approved planned development, we will allow them to do the 42-foot. It will be on city sewer, so the city will, if Doug mentioned, that will go through the city for their approvals as well. There is a, I'm probably telling you more than you need to know, but there is a Colonial Gas Pipeline that runs through this area that will be included in common space. They believe that they can work with Colonial and Atmos to get the sewer connection through here. The ponds are already in place. There's one here, and then there's another one in this area. There is, there was a connection, road connection here, but it was gonna be in the FEMA floodway, and it did not line up with what the city had intended. I'm gonna show you that real quick, if you bear with me a second. Oh, I guess it was on this one. Sorry, the computer's acting a little strange. Here is Merwood subdivision here. I'll turn on the city limits so you could see, and then, here is the long, the improvement that they're proposing, and a connection from Salem Cove Lane out to Rucker. So we've got a connection point here for that future road that's going through. But, other than that, I believe, most of the preliminary plan issues have been addressed. Like I said, most of these things are just things that we'll have to work through on the construction plan phases. Other than that, it's in good shape.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions?
Chair, if there's no other questions, this is in my District 7. Rucker Lane has recently been widened through most of that part. Merwood is a really pretty subdivision, and, subject to staff comments, which, and I think Mike's main issue is the 20-foot drainage easement, and then a few right-of-way and sidewalk concerns, but it looks like they're grandfathered in on the sidewalk width. I would make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
One second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 22-1007, Merwood, Section 3, Phase 2, Sections 6 through 8. Any other comments or questions? All who's in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B, we have four items that have been submitted for final plat approval. 6B1, item 22-2017. 6B1, item 22-2017, Gene Acres, four lots on 8.57 acres, zoned RL, located along Manchester Pike. Doris "Gene" Davis is the applicant. This includes a waiver for distance to a fire hydrant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This item was actually approved by the Planning Commission back in March of this year. The plat is in good order, but it was determined through Consolidated Utility District that the water line along Manchester Pike cannot support a hydrant. So, because of that, the applicant's bringing the plat back for a waiver to that provision. Because this is greater than the two-lot exemption we have for residential sprinkler systems, there will have to be sprinkler systems installed in each of these units, and the owner is aware of that. Beyond that, this plat hasn't changed. It's in good order.
Very good.
Doug, the way I understood you, the sprinkler systems will be installed in the houses?
They have to be, yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
That's including all of those comments that we just heard, right, David? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item 22-2017, Gene Acres. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B2, final plat for item 22-2036, Chestnut Estates, resubdivision of Track 3A, two lots on 6.43 acres, zoned RM, located along Crescent Road. James Cody and Emily Smith are the applicants. This includes a waiver for lot less than five acres located on a private easement and a fire hydrant waiver. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This may look familiar to the Planning Commission. The applicant obtained a waiver from the Planning Commission back in January of this year to allow for lots of less than five acres along a private easement. A plat that you're seeing is a result of that. They're proposing to subdivide about two acres from the parent track, which leaves about six acres, and that would be for a family member. We've also discussed the fire hydrant waiver. This property is going to be over 1,700 feet from Crescent Road, making a fire hydrant installation impractical at there at the road. It'd still be outside of the 1,000-foot requirement that we have. Our comments, for the most part, have been met. Just a couple of outstanding items. They need to, before it's recorded, put a surveyor stamp on the final plat. It's not uncommon that we see just review sets without the engineers or surveyor stamp, so the applicant's aware of that. Also, the plats, it seems when you look at the plat, it looks like they're actually making changes to Track 3B, which is the track right to the south of it, the 5.01 acres. We just wanted them to add a note to the plat saying that this plat is not involving that, just for clarity, more than anything. It's not, but we just want to make sure there's a note on the plat to that effect. But, beyond that, this plat's in good order.
Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval with staff comments. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item 22-2036, Chestnut Estates, resubdivision of Track 3A. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B3, final plat for item 22-2037, Clear Creek, Section 3, Phase 1, and resubdivision of Lot 140, Section 2, 19 lots on 26.98 acres, zoned PUD, located along Elmview Court. Clear Creek is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the commission back in March of 2016. This does appear to be consistent with that preliminary plan. A few items to address. Most of our comments have been addressed to our satisfaction. There are a few things I wanted to bring, and Mike will discuss some of these possibly as well to your attention. The first had to do with the setbacks. The setbacks, as they're shown on the plat right now, the pattern book was approved with a minimum of a five-foot setback, of course, with a combined total of 15 feet between structures. As you see, Mike's got the diagram right there. In practice, this has become an issue in the field, because what ends up happening if there's no coordination is that one builder will put the five-foot on one side, and the other builder will put the five-foot adjacent to that, making it a 10-foot separation. We've had to deal with that a couple of different times. So, we've asked the applicant to either use the five and 10, actually show on the plat itself which lot line has the five-foot side setback and which one has the 10, to avoid any particular confusion there, or to just use seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks throughout the board, and then that's not an issue. The applicant's design engineer has told me that they have agreed to use five-foot and 10-foot and to show that on the plat. We'll make sure that's done prior to plat recording, but the version you see here still shows the five-foot setbacks. There are several lots on here that have a TVA easement running through them. Mike's kind of highlighting those right there. We have requested the possibility of maybe having a five-foot setback off of the TVA easement. The applicant's design engineer came back and said they'll basically have a surveyor to stake the building corners to make sure that they're not getting into that easement. We would just ask them to put a note on the plat and put asterisks on those lots so that we know that, and then when building permits are issued, they'll know that a surveyor's supposed to be out there to actually mark those. And then, there are some drainage easements that are non-parallel or non-perpendicular to property lines, like Mike's highlighting right there. Those need to be tied down a little better. It's not, you can't really recreate that in the field. So, it's good to have those more specifically tied down. So, we've asked them to do that as well. Beyond those issues, unless, Mike, you've got anything else, this plat is in good order. We just recommend approval, subject to those conditions.
Doug?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for 22-2037, Clear Creek, Section 3, Phase 1, and resubdivision of Lot 140, Section 2. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B4, final plat for item 22-2038, Staghorn, Section 1, 68 lots on 62.44 acres, zoned PUD, located along Midland Road. Larry Smotherman, Staghorn Partners, is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was, well, most recently approved by the Planning Commission back in December of 2018. There was a one-year extension granted November of 2020, and infrastructure construction began soon afterwards. All lots are going to be served by residential sprinkler systems, which is consistent with the approved pattern book, and all the lots are at least 10,000 square feet. Most of our comments have been addressed. They still need to show centerline and utility information on the plat. Also, and yeah, and right there along Midland Road, what Mike's talking about, and that's right-of-way dedication area, and they have labeled that. Originally, the plat didn't show that as being labeled, but they have done that. There's also the stream buffer in the back on this one where it gets on to some of the property owned by Consolidated Utility District. They just need to coordinate with CUD to make sure that there's no issues with that. But, beyond those issues, I believe we're in good shape with this. Just recommend approval, subject to our comments.
Good.
Questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions, I'll move to approve, subject to staff comments.
Thank you, Marvin. We have a motion and a second to approve item 22-2038, final plat for Staghorn, Section 1. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 7, under Other Business, Subdivision Regulation Amendments. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mike's brought up, and I'll turn this over to him here in just a moment. We alluded to this a little earlier in the agenda. The Fire Code requires a wider cul-de-sac radius than what our subdivision regulations currently call for, so we are looking to make some changes to our subdivision regulations to make those consistent there. Mike's got this showing on the screen. This is on your iPads as well as the Fire Code information. We both have Mike, of course, here, and we also have Josh Sanders, our fire marshal, that can help answer any specific questions. But, I'll turn it over to Mike and Josh at this point for additional comments on this.
What we've discovered, going back and forth with Josh, is that the Fire Code has a requirement of a 96-foot diameter width for the cul-de-sacs, and that's to allow for the fire trucks to make a full turnaround. This is a detail from the city of Franklin that they are getting ready to use, if they haven't already. And here is a truck turning template showing the fire, turning movement of a fire truck. Now, this has a 42-foot radius, and ours is 46-foot, 43, 43-foot. So, this one, they might be swapping paint with some mailboxes as they go around. So, that's why we're asking to increase the diameter of our cul-de-sacs to meet the Fire Code and so these new, bigger fire trucks can safely turn in the cul-de-sacs. So, I don't know if Josh, if you want to add anything else to that or not. We do, before that happens, I do want to say that we will, if I can figure out how to clone myself and find more time, we're going to update our subdivision regulations And this will just be one of the things, but we thought that since it's already conflicting with the approved Fire Code, that we needed to go ahead and ask for this one now to get this one updated. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Josh.
No, you're fine. Nothing really to add. From what Mike said, this is just a good measure for us, housekeeping-wise, to ensure that our subdivision regulations match our Fire Code requirements. You know, fire apparatus manufacturers continue to increase size of apparatus to incorporate greater storage and capability. And so, last thing I think we want in this county is to have issues navigating these subdivisions and providing additional provisions for turning around and maneuvering through these spaces. So, this is definitely, I think, in good order for us to consider.
So, the next thing would be to bring this back for a public hearing at our 6 o'clock meeting?
It would. Now, subdivision regulations are a little different than rezonings. Rezonings have to be advertised at least 15 days prior, the meeting, legal knows 15 days prior. Subdivision regulations are 30 days, and these don't have to go to the entire Board of Commissioners. This is, these stop and start at the Planning Commission level.
So, it'll come back?
At the earliest, at this point, July is what we'd be looking at.
Okay. We don't need to make any...
I mean, as long as you're okay with us moving forward, I don't know if we need a specific motion for this or anything. I mean, we can just go ahead and start moving forward with getting this on the agenda.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. Doug and Mike, is it your intention to adopt this Franklin detail? And the reason I ask is, because it looks like they have a 100-foot...
They do.
Okay.
And that might be a subject of discussion. They went to 100-foot diameter. The Fire Code only says that we have to have a 96-foot diameter from face of curb to face of curb. And so, I mean...
Yeah, I understand.
I'm about bubbling over, because I, when I was talking with the city of Franklin, they gave me everything, all their new details, all their new specs and everything. So, and gave me permission to use everything. So, I'm like a kid in a candy shop that, I'm excited, I've got all these new toys to play with and details and stuff, but I need time to go through them and see what will work, what won't work. Right now, our curb and gutter diameter is, the right-of-way is a 100-foot width. So, if we went to 96-foot diameter, face of curb to face of curb, we would probably need 110 feet of right-of-way. So, this Franklin, they have, you know, showing sidewalks and some additional area behind that. This is 165-foot radius, 130-foot diameter. So, that's quite large. But, it, I guess, this is something that we need to discuss. What would y'all like to see?
Okay. Help me with my math. If you stayed within 96 and you went, and that would require 110-foot right-of-way, does that mean you only have a two-foot grass strip and then a five-foot sidewalk?
Yeah. That's typically what we have, and I think they have a much wider grass strip. And I could try to pull up their details.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the grass strips were like four feet.
Well, you can have two-foot, you got to have the five-foot sidewalk. You can have a two-foot, but you have to have a specialized handicap ramp. That's the trick.
And currently, our standard says, what, 80-some feet? What did you say earlier?
Is 86-foot from face of curb to face of curb diameter, 86-foot diameter, and then it's 100-foot total. So, that's seven foot on each side outside of that to the edge of the right-of-way. Pull these up if my computer will work. It doesn't like the font. So much information, it's, okay, here we go. So, they're showing a six-foot grass strip on high-volume local streets, or they've got it up to the back of curb. They're showing six-foot grass strips, and that's something we, you know, that's up for discussion, too. We may or may not want that much grass strip. That's a bigger right-of-way, and the highway superintendent's back here, he might not want to take care of that much right-of-way. I don't know. But, they do have some areas with seven-foot sidewalks, with sidewalks up against the curb and a 52-foot right-of-way. So, there's a lot to go through and discuss, but...
Josh, I have a question for you. Does Rutherford County currently have any of these larger fire vehicles or fire trucks?
We do have several large vehicles. The expansion or the plan for additional apparatus of significant size, primarily radial or aerial apparatus, is in a planning phase at this point. So, the idea would be to incorporate the specifications for that large vehicle should and when we purchase one of those, then we would not be behind the eight ball, and then having to come back to this body and say, hey, we've got these subdivision regulations, but hey, we got a bigger truck now, so now they don't work.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Patitz?
I'm glad to hear the commissioner ask that. I see this one right here is a, this apparatus is a ladder truck with a high-pressure bucket on the back of it. Have to tell you, in about the last two or three budgets we've had... Have to tell you, in about the last two or three budgets, we've had, we've had one of those possibility in it. It has been removed from the budget due to other situations. But yes, this is a possibility, or it's something that is needed here in Rutherford County as we continue to build two- and three-story houses. It's going to have to be something. And that's why you see it in Franklin's designs that they have here. These are units that has to be had. And we continue to build schools that are two-story. And these are something that Rutherford County at some time will be. So I'm glad we're pre-planning our developments where they will have to use these units as well because I know we're dealing right now with one out here. It's the city that has the plan, but it's stuck right out here in the middle of the county on a non-contiguous annexation. But those houses would have to have a ladder truck involved in those, some of those houses that they're talking about. So yes, we'll have to go this direction.
Recommendation from staff, what's our path forward?
Well, at this point, I think our path forward would be, if you guys are okay with us moving forward, we'd probably go ahead and start planning for a July public hearing before the planning commission. In that time, we can kind of flesh out some of these things. We can still talk about it. We can even talk about it at our next day meeting. We'll have one more prior to that meeting in July. So I mean, if you'd like us to look at some specific issues prior to the public hearing, we'd be happy to do that. Again, we'll have a couple more meetings prior to the July night meeting, and we could even have more discussion at that meeting and defer action if we had to. So, you know, ultimately, like Mike said, I think there are other changes we would like to make, but this one, for consistency, we'd like to get this one going as quick as we can.
I'd bring back, and it might be in June, an update in June, this is what we're going to do.
Absolutely.
And then that public hearing would be, if I'm not mistaken, on June the 11th.
July.
I'm sorry, July the 11th. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Rhonda.
So Doug, have we looked at what the cities are doing? Because I know a lot of times our fire departments, they provide mutual aid to each other. So do we know if our, whatever we're going to be implementing is going to be consistent with what the cities are doing?
Well, I'll only speak, this is what Franklin is doing. Now, have we looked at Murfreesboro? I personally have not.
I have looked at Murfreesboro. They're still at the 86-foot diameter, and they've just updated their regulations. So maybe they are not aware that their subdivision regulations is in conflict with the fire code. So, or maybe they haven't adopted that part of the fire. I don't know. I mean...
I can't speak to their adoptions or certainly their process. I do know that the city of Murfreesboro does have very like apparatus, if not identical apparatus, to the turning specifications that were provided by the city of Franklin with regard to that aerial device, that aerial apparatus. But I do know they do have a similar code adoption as to what their specific planning process is. I can't speak to that. But they are certainly in that same ballpark of apparatus type and turning need.
And then I guess a follow-up question that's going to be in terms of dispatch. We obviously have existing cul-de-sacs now that these larger trucks would not be able to function in this design. So how does that work in terms of dispatch, that you dispatch the correct apparatus to be able to function on that street?
Well, unfortunately, you know, our dispatch response guidelines are going to be not necessarily specific to the type of street they'll be traveling, obviously to the incident need. You know, what a smaller cul-de-sac or roadway width would do is it just creates difficulty would, if they had to turn around in a certain area, it would take a longer period of time, multiple-point turns, if you will, you know, kind of do one of these things to have to get the, to get the truck turned around. So obviously, the increased diameter would diminish that timeframe of turning around. The same trucks are still going to have to respond, and based on our response guidelines, we don't really have the luxury of, unfortunately, saying, well, this is a smaller street, so let's send a smaller truck. As, you know, all of our apparatus are, you know, continue to age, and we purchase new apparatus, they will likely continue to be larger as manufacturers build them to accommodate, like I said, additional storage and capability. But with the, and we'll, you know, as the county grows and the short timeframe that it has had to grow, we'll certainly face challenges with smaller cul-de-sacs that we do have. We can turn around theirs, it just takes a little more effort. So this would obviously, as time goes on and as we increase our development, to minimize that difficulty.
So that may be a piece that you want to keep in mind as you continue to turn over equipment, because you may want to diversify and make sure that you've got different sizes if you should have a unique need, because I know we've got a lot of really narrow roads that we have to function in.
Yes, ma'am.
I do think it'd be worthwhile for us to have a conversation with all the municipalities. Again, this is one of those areas where we might want to look at some sort of uniform adoption. The other question I have is in terms of an effective date. So if we're talking about advertising, a lot of times I know whenever we do an adoption of some sort, we like to have a sort of a marker date that's an easy date to remember and easy date for implementation. So what are you thinking about for that in terms of an adoption, an effective date?
Well, honestly, we hadn't really gotten that far with it as far as an effective date. You know, obviously, if this goes through in July, I mean, maybe September 1st, maybe August. I mean, we haven't really had that internal discussion, but we'd have the option to make it effective immediately. We've already been talking to developers and recommending that they start planning around that because we're going to be heading in that direction, so they're aware. But we haven't come up with an exact date, but I think we've got some flexibility in that regard.
There was one more thing, Josh. I just had a thought is, I know like on our plaits, and your dispatch system may not have a way to do this, but I know like a lot of times on our plaits, we'll flag a critical lot. I'm just curious if at some point, there may be some way in dispatch to flag a unique situation in terms of a road being narrow or there being a hill or obstacle or something. I don't know if there's any way for you to do that, but that may be something at some point that you want to think about in terms of how do we plan for where we're going.
Absolutely. And I do think there is that capability, to whatever extent we want to utilize it within our CAD system or computer-aided dispatch system to identify certain needs that we might have. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Please.
Josh, I know that the truck specs are something that, there's very few manufacturers of these fire trucks and this larger, this setup of a truck. To me, on this size, does this feel like much larger than this would get into the rear steers and things like that that could turn better? So we're accommodating probably the largest size for roadway use, I would say, that...
In my foreseeable outlook, that would probably be the largest apparatus that we would have turning concerns about, if that makes sense. That it was a tandem axle, what we call mid-mount platform, would certainly be, whenever the county is able to procure one of those, that would certainly be the, probably the most difficult turning apparatus that we would have at that point. As you mentioned, you get into tractor-drawn apparatus where you have a rear steering capability. I don't know that we'd ever get to that point in this county, that those are very specialized, very handy, but I don't know that we'd ever get to that. So if we, by designing our subdivision regulations around this 96-foot minimum, would certainly accommodate that.
That's what I was thinking, that the 50-foot length is really getting on the outer edges of where you'd almost have to have a rear steer in town or anywhere else anyway. So we're really accommodating the largest one.
This would very much accommodate the, probably the largest apparatus that we'd be having on the roadways.
And then the fire codes, they haven't updated in, I mean, they haven't made a change in quite a while, so it's not like they're going to change again next year. I mean, they, they'll probably hold on to this for a while.
I would say this, where this comes from is that we're on the 2018 cycle of the International Fire Code, as far as our county's adopted fire code. These requirements come out of Appendix B, which was specifically adopted by the county. So all the appendices don't necessarily have the way to law unless adopted, as y'all may know. So these were adopted, so these are enforceable statutes or codes that we will utilize. This specifically comes out of Section D 103 in Appendix D. And so I, as, this is probably the most updated. I haven't seen anything coming out of the 2021 that would change that. So foreseeably, this would probably be the standard, as it were, moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I know it's hard to predict both of those and where the growth is, but it seems like I deal with heavy equipment on the DOT side, and there are certain sizes that don't change or certain dimensions and certain accommodations that, based on the roadway sizes and things like that. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So Josh, correct me, what I think I just heard was with these new fire regulations, it came from the state level, and Rutherford County has agreed to adopt those. So you could say, I guess, by law, that we need to adopt at least a minimum 96-foot diameter?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so we've got to do that. All right. On Lee's question about the specs, the spec on this particular long ladder vehicle still shows a turning radius of 42 feet. So that being said, it sounds like it could still work in our current pattern, but you made the points that turn, stop, back, turn, stop, back. It could still work, but it's a time saver.
It is, yes, sir. We, when do, we, part of our driver training program incorporates, you know, three-point turning and things like that. So that is why we do that, for that purpose. But yes, it can turn around, it just becomes a little bit more of a chore than the norm.
No brick mailboxes at the curb line.
That's right. We try to save that from the happening, yes, sir.
So I guess that's really the thing. It's not so much the radius turn, it's, you've got a long rear end you've got to pay attention to. Okay. And lastly, to follow up on Rhonda's comment, and Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask you to task Doug. I think it's critical that county leadership and city leadership communicate with one another, and I would like for you to task Doug between now and the next time we meet to discuss this, that he reach out to his counterpart at the city planning and make sure they clearly understand that the fire code has changed and 96 is the new legal limit. And lastly, Mike, I'm not so sure I want to explore anything other than the 96. I don't know that I, we need to go from a developer's standpoint, developer's sake. I don't know if we need to push it to 100.
So 96-foot with seven-foot from face, from the face of curb to the right-of-way to make 110 feet.
Right, versus, which is...
Versus 130.
Versus the 130 that Franklin has.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be my preference, but I know we're not going to vote on that today.
I figured there would be a lot of hard swallowing going on with 130-foot diameter.
Doug, do I need to repeat all that, or you got it?
No, that's right, I think I have. Anything else?
I'm assuming that this includes nobody's parking in that same set cul-de-sac, too. And that's going to be hard to prevent.
We have had to do that on temporary turnarounds at the edges of developments where a road extends 150-foot past an intersection or longer. We require a long-term temporary turnaround that's paved and a temporary easement on an actual lot. So we've had at least one instance where somebody kept parking on that temporary turnaround that a fire truck couldn't turn around. So the HOA contacted us, and we told them that they needed to put some signage up and to prevent the parking in that in case a fire truck or school bus or trash truck or anything needed to use that. So that, it does happen. It does happen. So are you saying you want signs like this?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, what happens if there's a car sitting there and the fire truck needs to go?
Exactly.
I think I know what's going to happen, but you know, I don't know how you police, as in making sure in all the cul-de-sacs and streets that there are no parkings down to keep people from actually parking there. Unless you stand there at it and say, just like the truck's turning left out of the project we had two weeks ago, there's no way to do it unless you stand there and say, you can't go this way, and we can't do that, so...
In trying to think through, I'm by no means a firefighter, and I don't run emergency traffic, but I'm hopeful that running emergency traffic doesn't occur in a cul-de-sac very often, that it's more after the event, making those turnarounds to exit the facility. Or if there is a fire in the cul-de-sac, they pull in, block everything, it doesn't matter, get the emergency taken care of. So I'm just trying to think through that. If I'm inaccurate in that, I apologize, but I just, I think, I'm like Mike, around the 96-foot should suffice, and we're meeting the codes. And so, just trying to think through how one might enter, what they may use a cul-de-sac for. So I'm hoping it's not at-speed emergency. I mean, if it happens, it happens, but I think more often than not, it would be post-event or to address an event in the cul-de-sac, which at that point, you block anything you need and take care of business.
Yes, sir.
Josh, you might address that. There is laws against parking in cul-de-sacs. I mean...
There is, yes. So any roadway that serves a, basically serviceable area that the fire rescue department would provide a response to, this basically counts as a fire apparatus access road, is how it's termed in the fire code. Blocking or obscuring or obstructing fire apparatus access roads is a code violation. There are times where my office does have to go out and address certain congestion on these fire apparatus access roads. It is quite a chore to enforce. Mind you, I don't have a person that can go around 24 hours a day and take care of that. A lot of times, it's, you know, more or less, we'll get notified of, you know, somebody's having a large party, there's a lot of parking on the road, and sometimes we can, we can go help clear that up. But it is a very difficult thing to enforce. Mind you, the, what this body does on a regular basis with ensuring parking in driveways is adequate, ensuring that roadway widths are adequate does help to mitigate some of that challenge. And so I think that's an important part of what you all do. The Appendix D, Section 103.6, does address signage, to your point. So there is a provision in there that we're required by myself as the fire code official. We can, we can require signage to be put up, you know, upon, you know, the developer developing that project. And so that is, it gives sign dimensions and everything like that. So that is in there as well. So the county does have that ability to say that we are going to require these signs to be put on fire line areas, fire apparatus access roads, turnarounds, things like that.
If you'd look at that Franklin detail closely, it has four no-parking-anytime signs on that cul-de-sac.
Yes, sir.
As a standard.
Even to be maintained by an HOA, even marking on the face of that curb, no parking or fire, you know, in the red and white or something like that would be better than what we have now, probably.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Any notice we can give to the people and be less intrusive, maybe? I don't know.
Just to be clear, are we saying signs or no signs? I'm, I'm open to either way. We can... Okay.
We can look into that more between now and then and get some discussion points.
I need to have some in-depth discussions with the road superintendent, too, about all this. What's that?
Couldn't signs be put up at the entrance to the development and not just on the cul-de-sacs that says, "No parking, no street parking," period? And wouldn't that cover everything?
Let's, well, let us look into that. I think it's, I think it's more complex than just putting one sign up for the whole development, but let's, we can look into that some.
Okay. We've asked, I don't know how many times here in the last few years, the bylaws for all the HOAs to have no street parking, and then if you put up signage, it's, you know, I'm not sure that, what's the right thing to do or not, but it's, could be just part of our discussion, okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one thing that signage does, especially when it's directed by the governing authority, it does make that enforceable even at the law enforcement level. So, you know, a government-required or government-placed signage can be citable by our sheriff's office.
Just to preview, one of the Franklin details does show on-street parking. It's a 38-foot of pavement, well, from face of curb to face of curb, two 11-foot lanes and two 8-foot on-street parking. You will need a little bit wider right-of-way, I believe, of 52-foot, if that's y'all wanted to consider that. When we get into changing subdivision regulations and whatnot, just if you do want to allow on-street parking, we, you know, we can certainly accommodate that. Just food for thought.
Yep.
All right. Anything else, Doug? Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments, especially considering the regulation amendments? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one last question for Doug.
Rhonda.
Where are we at on the comprehensive plan? Kind of what's next?
Well, we just had our neighborhood, well, I called it neighborhood, our community meetings last week. The lead on the consultant team, she's going to be out this week. And actually, I'm going to be out of the office for most of this week myself. We're going to circle the wagons next week. We're in the process of scheduling a meeting of what we're calling the Business and Nonprofit Roundtable. That'll probably be sometime in early June. Kind of still in the gathering, data gathering phases. Once we finish that, that's when we start really getting into the nitty-gritty of things. And appointing a steering committee as well, that's also something we'll be doing in the next, probably four to six weeks. Moving right along.
Anything else? Our next meeting is scheduled for, we've got a three-week break, actually. We've got, our next meeting is scheduled for a 6:00 PM meeting in this room on June the 13th. Let me go ahead and mention, I've got on my calendar our June 27th meeting, which is always a 9:00 AM meeting, is probably going to be changed to the 28th.
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up. We've already, the advertisement for next month's meeting will run tomorrow. And we did incorporate that in. It'll be the 28th instead of the 27th, just because of the Board of Commissioners budget meeting. But, it'll still be in this, it'll just be on Tuesday. But, it'll be in this room and it'll still be at 9:00 AM. So, just, we'll remind you again a few weeks out, you know, at the next meeting. But, yes.
Well, go ahead and change your calendars to Tuesday, the 28th, instead of Monday, the 27th. Anything else?
May I say one more thing?
Please.
Josh, thanks for everything that you do on this because I remember as growing up in the county and in the very rural part of the county, which is probably no longer rural, but not having anything as much as a volunteer fire department. So, I'm so thankful to have those services. I live very close to one of those as well. So, thank you for your work on that.
Thanks, sir. It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for your attendance today and your participation. We are adjourned.